We're four minutes over.
It's, it's, the conference is on.
Oh, you started the meeting?
Yeah, so as long as he joins.
Okay, well, good to see everybody. Called this, every week, whoever has this meeting or budget here, your budget session.
Budget workshop.
Called this budget workshop to order. What, uh, primary reason of the meeting is to add the sheriff's budget for the New Abbeville Investigations Center, so, uh, is there any opposition to that? So, Beth?
I think that was already approved and you just need to have it now to put it in there. I, I kinda like to say something. I would have some questions outside of the office. And I did check with Jackie at first, she agreed with me. Any council member who's called meeting, it doesn't have to be the president or the vice, the auditor can call one. So, I went ahead and did this because I needed to have the information and I needed to have it by tomorrow to get it in the gateway. So, um, that's, that's why it's called. If somebody else called it again, then I also called it, so.
Yep.
And then I did pass out a new G and L probation because the last column was not, did not move over, so it's moved over now, so that one's finished, so.
Tim, do you have the thing in front of you, the, uh, the proposed budget? I don't have it.
I think we agreed, uh, I think the amount we were requiring was fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I do have it.
But we're gonna have to break that down. Are we gonna break that down by line, or are we gonna leave it?
It's going to go into its own line.
One individual line, like Patty with the investigations.
Well, I don't think we're gonna call it that.
Should've been.
It's just the investigation.
He has to ask you to add it to the budget call, because I really can't.
What we, what we're calling it is the Carroll County Investigations Center and it's already in, in this year's, under the council budget. So, it will not be here next year and you wanna add it to the sheriff's. Sheriff's line, not the jail, but the sheriff.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds good. Pull the bar and open. You can mute on your end if you'd like to.
Okay. Thanks, Ian.
Yep.
So, I, I was just saying that we moved to a line, stated Investigation Center and that the fifteen thousand is in there.
The other thing is, they asked for fifteen thousand this year to get started. I don't know about next year.
Well, I've got, I've got the sheet that the board initially gave to all of us and the estimated annual initial costs were twenty-three eighty-four. And then the estimated annual cost, extrapolating the one-time cost of like the security and the new war and the bars, et cetera, was ten thousand six thirty-seven. And I spoke with you a couple of days ago and he stated that, the board stated that hasn't changed at all, so, so fifteen's plenty.
That's, yeah. Eleven probably would do, I presume, but.
So, um, what we would need to do is add a line called Investigation Center?
It's called the Carroll County Investigations Center.
Carroll County. That, that probably won't fit on the papers. Carroll County Investigations Center, uh, and the amount we're funding along eleven thousand. Is there any opposition to that?
So, I don't have a line. Tracy has one.
This is about the new meeting I've been in, you know?
Did you just be a little bit? Got a personal.
It's your thing.
We start reporting.
Do I understand that we have to repeat this again next year, this is now until the end of the year?
This is the budget year.
Next year. And then twenty-three, we'll have to redo it.
Yeah, he will put it in his budget for next, the twenty-twenty.
Maybe we'll have to make another line or anything.
No, they're all over maybe.
If, if you, if you take the twenty-three three ninety-nine and subtract the annual cost of ten-six-thirty-seven, you're really closer to thirteen thousand. And I think there's two months of rent at twelve hundred dollars that we need to add in for this year as part of the initial cost. So, I'm, I'm fine with eleven thousand, but I don't think eleven thousand is gonna do it. I think thirteen is gonna be closer to the number. I'm getting a lot of blank stares.
I don't understand that.
Well, he's got, like I said.
I think we overstaffed this year because we put a full year's rating in this year. Because we put. Yeah. I, I was gonna say that at that meeting, so, but I mean, I.
But that can be converted.
Yeah.
Because you'll have a lease.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
So, if that's the case, then you'll have to let it cover.
But I'm not understanding your math on the, the difference.
Okay. The document that I'm looking at, this guy's referencing, the, the top portion of that is annual and initial costs.
Right.
The total for both is twenty-three three ninety-nine.
Right.
Okay? Well, if you then look at the second portion of that document, the annual costs, which would be.
All other.
All other, right? Is ten-six-thirty-seven.
Yeah, I get it.
So, I guess maybe I'm not understanding the scope of discussion here. I thought we were trying to determine, are we trying to determine what to put in for twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Eleven thousand, never mind.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was a long way to go.
Because we're not putting fifteen thousand in for this year so we can get it out of our budget.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
Out of our budget.
And do you know what, you said you've got some claims coming in on that, because you're up and going. I mean, everything's in there. Do you know about what those claims are?
Uh.
Off the top of my head, I know one of them is about twenty-three hundred, that for installation of, uh, switching from a window to a door.
That's still.
Or interview room.
Okay.
And then, uh, the only other invoice I actually have right now is, uh, the bar, the bars that were put on windows.
Yeah.
And then that cost goes very close to that estimate I have there.
Okay.
Again, I don't know the, I can't recall the specific number, but it's very close to that. So, but I do anticipate before claims are, uh, need to be turned in this month, I'll have additional invoices.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Right. Well, might that like. I think that's the only thing we have to discuss. Is there anything else to do, Jim?
Well, we were.
I have, I have a couple more questions that we have to look down. Um, uh, one of the questions we have is on the veteran's office, on that computer software. And that is a reoccurring every-year payment that he estimated, so that has to stay in there. Does anyone need?
Did we reproduce it?
No. We loved it, but we were questioning.
We didn't know if it was.
They had me in there.
Oh, yeah. So, it just needs to be left.
And then I don't know if everybody got Cameron's letter about, um, the office administrator. Did we, I, I guess I missed the discussion. Will you discuss that position when we hear the budget? Maybe we just had a seven percent. Did we have any discussion on that, Sam, if you remember?
Yes, she did.
Yeah.
And what was our reasoning for, for just giving it seven percent?
Uh, she was a part-time employee making ten thousand dollars her last two years ago. Now she's making.
Twenty-nine thousand.
Is she still part-time?
She's, she's a full-time. She was a part-time, we say the benefits, now she's a full-time receiving three times the pay.
He thinks.
She's double the pay and that's.
He thinks she ought to get second deputy pay, which is seventeen hundred nine. We're going to fifteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, and that's what she's gonna be making next year. And if we do change it, Beth pointed out that we've got four other, what?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have four that are making fourteen fifty-eight right now, which is.
Who, what? Four new.
Four positions in the courthouse.
And they aren't second deputies. He's proven, he's saying she's like a second deputy, but she's, I mean, it's not a second deputy position.
Well, I think you have to read the job description. And not compare to second, I mean, you have to read the job description. And like me, the highway department has a, let's just call it office administrator manager. Um, the extension has an office manager. I kinda compared it to Bayla. I was just questioning his, I mean, if, if she can do that position, I mean, she's not like a clerical, part-time person anymore if you read her job description.
So, what are, what are you saying? Do you want to go as that?
Well, I, I think she is a little off the, off the scale if we compare the job description to the ones that I just highly compared to. Well, I mean, I, more or less the highway and the extension office manager, I mean, if you would read all of those job descriptions. She's pretty low for being an administrator. Or.
An administrative assistant is what her job title is.
As office administrator.
They changed. By whatever change.
So, uh, just my personal opinion, he's within his right and authority to request and bring this up to our attention. The reality is, is we spent considerable amount of time discussing and making the decision and, uh, we, we just, we just can't continually second-guess and flip-flop and.
I just didn't remember our discussion.
We've gotta live with these decisions that we made and speak to them. Uh, that's my, that's my personal opinion.
Hey, I just didn't remember having discussion about it. I was, I was.
Yeah, I didn't think we really discussed it thoroughly personally, but does any, Scott, do you have any thoughts on it?
I, I think that we, we did. I mean, I know the number different times he's been up here in front of us.
Yeah.
No, I mean, the budget workshop.
Yeah. So, I, I could, I could go either way personally on it, uh, but, uh, it's kinda, we need a consensus approved to get any changes made within it, so.
I just wanted to kinda level, you know, we were sitting, we were trying to level the playing field where if we have administrators or office managers, then they should all be kinda, if they're doing the same job descriptions, they should be getting somewhat the same pay.
Well, this was a person who was part-time under the, under the previous executive director, APC, executive director, part-time at ten plus dollars an hour, ten, ten twenty-nine.
When, when he left, you put her out to business.
When he left and Cameron needed some ramp-up time and he needed some additional help, but she was running the office in transition. We, we bumped it and made it a full-time position, but it's not like she's been grossly underpaid. And it's not like she's, well, I'll just leave it at that. I, I think we've had this discussion. I think we've made the decision and. It's been visited in my opinion.
Is that what you think, Ethan, too?
Are you muted?
There, can you hear me?
I hear you now.
I could go either way, uh, just wherever the, you know, the council, the council is, be fine with me. I can see Tracy's point real well, or else this is your point, Jim, so I, I could go either way on this.
Are you, are you wanting motion on it? Or are you wanting movement on? Are you just bringing this up for discussion?
Well, I was bringing up the discussion as, I just wanted to know why she, you know, why that one did not comparable to our other office administrator and office manager's positions.
I'd like to see movement on it, but, but, you know, you know, it comes down to consensus. What?
Where are the, the current differences?
Well, the highway administrator or whatever the position's called, seventeen seventy-nine, um, like he said, the second deputies are seventeen twenty-nine, but their job descriptions are not the same as administrative highway hers is. And the extension office and manager is eighteen seventy-five. The highway and the extension office is comparable to what she's doing in the job description.
And she is currently where? Fifteen dollars.
How many employees and union parts do we have in the highway department versus what's being overseen and managed in?
Thirty, thirty-one.
Why does that matter? She's an office manager.
Because you wanna pay her the same as.
No, I didn't say that. I said I'd like, I just wanna know why she's so much lower.
That's what's being requested though, right?
Not quite. Seventeen twenty-nine versus seventeen seventy-nine. It's like fifty cents. I mean.
I just wanted to, I just, I'm just questioning why it's almost, what is it, two dollars and fifty cents lower? I mean.
What was the position I'm in on the highway?
And then another raise.
So, the extension office manager, why, why is theirs up so high then also?
They work forty hours. I honestly do not know, but I think that they work forty hours or so.
Which is ten percent, which is, well, I mean, that hourly is, but that's about, that's about.
What if we raised our hand on a consensus? It just, who, who wants to go with seventeen twenty-nine versus fifteen fifty-nine? Raise your hand.
Ethan, I would.
Which, which number?
Seventeen.
Well, I don't think we have to make her, uh, uh, I mean, why don't we just give her a dollar like we gave the highway manager? I mean, she went to.
I said, I would, I would concur with Tracy. I think that's a, that's a, percentage-wise, that's a pretty good size.
So, you wanna go sixteen fifty-nine?
Percentage-wise, she's making double what she made.
Agreed. But it doesn't matter. She's, that, that.
But it does matter.
To do that, not to her.
She's not part-time.
Well, well, that's a whole nother discussion.
Well, okay.
Whether it's meaningful to her, that's.
Okay, let's, let's look at it this way.
I shouldn't go into the personal. It's the physician, so if she quit next week, maybe the new person come in also. So, I mean, you got it. That's why you go to the job description.
Okay, I'll put it up, because I'd look at the job descriptions. I, I'd like to give her a dollar an hour, make her at sixteen sixty, like we gave the highway.
I'll go with that.
Let's go on from fourteen fifty-eight to sixteen sixty this.
Instead of fifteen fifty, well, no, not even that, right? So, she's currently gonna make fourteen fifty-eight next year?
No, she's gonna make fifteen fifty-nine.
And that is the seven percent.
And that's seven percent over what she's making in twenty-twenty-one.
Correct.
She's already getting a raise.
So, you want.
So, you wanna go a dollar more than the seven percent?
I, I just need to understand.
Yeah, I also need to understand. Thank you.
Well, if, if she's making fourteen fifty-eight now and you had a dollar today, that's fifteen fifty-eight, that's almost what we're paying her, that's what we sent in here.
Yeah, that's seven percent.
I, I was thinking of going to the sixteen sixty.
I, I would agree with Tracy. Scott?
Is it?
Well, I was going to.
Is there any limit to what we're ever gonna do when somebody comes?
Have somebody else read the drop just there?
Before I answer.
I've read it in almost every job description in here. I didn't for this, because this wasn't on the agenda for today, because I was aware of it. You've approved them.
I am gonna dig back somewhat on what Josh said. You know, two years ago, she was part-time. Have her job duties increased that much more to facilitate that kind of a raise?
That's what Tracy's saying, they have.
They have.
That's what, that's her point.
Well, that's, that's, that's what she's saying. That's nothing.
What?
That's your analysis of the job description.
Let's, I mean, I mean, what else discussion then?
So, I, I wanna just put out there, we do this today, you better gear up. Because everybody, everybody, the floodgates will be open. And, and we've, we are setting a precedent that we will say no to nobody. So, you better just get ready to give everybody raises every time they come in here or send you a letter. Like, I, I, I'm getting a little worked up and I apologize. I'll back down a little bit because I recognize it. The, the truth is, we spent a lot of time sitting in here. I have another job that I sat in here for eight hours a day and we went through all of this. And because he pens a letter and he doesn't think it's enough, now we gotta go and redo the whole thing? And if we do it for him, we're gonna do it for everybody. And I'm gonna be back here every Thursday morning to have these meetings, to go over this and over this and over this. And trust me, I'll be here, but we're doing it to ourselves. And I just, I, I just have a fundamental problem with it. I wanna pay people what they're worth. Seven percent raise against typically New County's six percent raise for twenty-twenty-two, when they didn't get any raise in twenty-twenty-one and we gave a two percent. So, if you wanna compare to typically New County, we've given nine percent over two years to their six percent. I wanna pay people what they're worth, but we cannot go over this and over this and sit here and just be leveraged all the time. And I'll, and I'll stop at that.
Well, I'd like to say that, you know, that, that, I've heard that the cost of living, that the inflation rate is anywhere from nine to seventeen percent, depending if you choose. So.
So, you have, and we should get seventeen percent raises?
I do not. I am not. I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I know we gave seven percent, but, but if the cost of living is nine percent, let's just say it's nine. Most everybody agrees it's nine percent. I, I mean, so, you know, the average person, the house is going down, two percent. So, just, you made your point. I'm making my tip.
Also, as a fiscal body, I know that our incomes haven't, aren't going up nine percent.
Yeah.
I mean, the county incomes aren't going up nine percent, so we have to, we have to appear closely to revenue streams.
I, I, I hundred percent agree with you. I, I'm sorry, I didn't even.
No, that's fine.
I, I just completely agree with him. This body has allowed anybody that comes forward to make requests, um, and we've heard all, we have no obligation to hear them all. And I, I, I just don't like the precedent.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
This is a budget workshop. Isn't this when we're supposed to do this?
Yeah.
Back in July when you, when you folks, when they came?
Yes, we went through the whole budget process.
That is when we should've done it. So, move on from that.
We did it at budget. I mean, this, this is a special call meeting to do.
I'm saying when they came in July.
When they came in July.
Yeah. That opened the can. This is a budget workshop. This is when we're supposed to be discussing this.
We closed the budget.
Who closed?
Some weeks, some weeks ago. We, we agreed, we were done. We called a special meeting today. This, this meeting would not have occurred, period.
I don't think so.
Our, okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, please, please, please. I'm gonna give you a chronicle. We, we had our budget workshops. We were done. Our next budget, our next meeting was the adoption on the hour of fourteen. This is a special call meeting. We only called because the, the budget issue arose around the Abby in Limbey had Investigation Center. So, from my perspective, the budget was done. We had all agreed. It was buttoned up. The only thing that was left to do was to, to adopt it, act of, formally adopt it at fourteen noon. So, is it during the budget? Sure. But is it? An extra request at, that was precipitated by a letter from a department head? Yes, it was. So, I mean, we, I mean, we're getting a little bit under the, into the weeds, but.
Let's get a consensus on this and then we'll move on. Right now, I mean, that is. Who has, who wants to? That's your turn.
Yeah. That's my turn. So, is there any other discussion on this? All right, so, uh, what is your, uh, number that you're looking for?
Yeah, I just want to give her the dollar, the dollar up at the highway there.
So, I have to have a number, so.
Sixteen sixty.
Yeah.
Sixteen sixty? Okay. Hey, that. We gotta settle in on, uh, there, there's two numbers. What's the current number, Tim?
Fifteen fifty-nine.
Okay, so the current number is fifteen fifty-nine for the, uh, for twenty-twenty to fifteen fifty-nine. The, Tracy's, uh, uh, motion, uh, recommendation is sixteen sixty and we're trying to get a consensus on which number we're going for for, uh, twenty-twenty-two budget. So, those in favor of sixteen sixty, giving her an additional dollar raise?
Ian, bro?
Okay, so I have three, uh, those in for fifteen fifty-nine. Fifteen fifty-nine is that majority, so we'll put that on twenty-twenty-three budget, twenty-twenty-two, excuse me. Okay, is there any other?
I, I need to say something too. This meeting wasn't just called for the sheriff's department. It was also called for, to look at the court's, um, I was requested to say that to the court's, um, salaries for next year. So, it was discussed, um, by two or three members, um, so I'm just running that out there and not saying anything bad.
That's where I'm confused. I mean, we had questions that we wrote down that had to be answered before this could be adopted, and I'm not understanding why you think it was closed.
Well, that wasn't the reasons that we were, we wouldn't have had this meeting unless somebody said that we had to do the shares. And Jac, I talked to Jackie and she thought it would be better to have that done before the new year. I mean, it looks cleaner that you're doing it that way. And then we also had a couple of council people that wanted to talk about the court raises, so.
Right, let's, let's discuss third floor raises. That was, that was a, as we're all aware, a very contentious discussion. And I went and figured, because we made a motion in March to give them that mid-year raise of, and I think it worked out three percent. And during the discussion, a month ago or a month and a half ago, we decided to retract the three percent raise that would, that happened in March and go back to the February or January first pay scale and go seven percent from there, which I, I see makes sense doing that. The thing that, the thing that sticks with me is that they got nine, if not maybe ten months, at least nine months, would have paid that a raise that no one else got. So, when you do an average weight on what they will receive for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, they got about nineteen months' worth of a three percent raise. Everybody else will give twelve months of a seven percent raise. So, when you do an average weight of that percentage, it works out about five and a half percent that they will end up giving versus everybody else in the courthouse. To me, that, obviously, it's not, you know, apples and apples, but five and a half versus seven percent, um, for the discussion that we had then, I think is relatively close. And given the fact that Tracy didn't connect to them and would make that, that raise in March like we did, um, even though they're, I think.
Was it March?
It was March.
It was July, yeah, it was.
Wasn't it March?
It was summer.
It started in.
It started in April.
I don't remember that.
Well.
Anyway, that's.
The prosecutor came in like that.
I, I didn't think the raises were effective yet, but. I, I didn't think the raises were effective units, but.
It was, I think it was April, but I can check now.
Yeah.
We need, we need a dollar round, Scott. What, what, what are you proposing?
It was amended in, um, March thirtieth and it didn't start, I know, until like April because of the way we get paid.
I would be, I would be satisfied in leaving them where they are. Um, and like I stated since Tracy.
Leaving them where they are.
Seven percent.
At, no, at a three percent.
Oh.
Because year over year, they're, that would make them five and a half percent on the weighted average.
I, I don't understand your math there.
Well, they got nineteen months' worth of.
Nineteen months. I don't see, what nineteen months?
Twelve months next year.
Yeah.
And nine months.
But they're not getting a raise next year with, with your math.
They'll still be at that three percent. So.
But that's not a raise.
I'm saying the weighted average. You take how many, how many months?
That's what I'm disputing is your mathematics. You're, you're saying that they got a, uh, how much raise? Did you say the fifty cents that we gave them once?
Three percent.
Three percent. Okay. So you're taking that times two. I'm saying that you take that and divide it by two because you're taking three percent this year.
I'm not.
For nine months.
I'm not taking by two. They, what I did, I took three percent multiplied by nineteen, which is how many months they, they will get the three percent raise and divide it by twelve. Because that compares everybody else in the courthouse with the, the court clerks that we raised.
Okay. So.
So they get the benefit of the three percent raise for nineteen months.
No, I don't think that math is correct. They're getting a three percent raise for nine months. They're getting zero raise the following year. So that three percent raise is more like a one and a half percent raise compounded over that nineteen months.
Oh.
Weight, weighted average.
They're still getting three percent.
Yeah.
Or they're still, they're getting a raise.
They're still.
They're getting a raise from, from January.
No. Okay. Okay. Let me, let me, let me give you, let me give, let's take everybody else out. If I give you, the auditor, a three percent raise this year and I gave you no raise the next year, would you say I gave you a raise next year?
Well, no, but if you give it to, no, wait a minute. If you gave me.
You're still getting the benefit of the three percent raise on your pay scale.
Say again.
Next year.
Say, when did you give me the raise? Say in March.
Okay.
So in March. So that would be the nine months. And that way, nobody else got this raise. So then the next year, I didn't get a raise, but I still got three percent more than they did.
Well, you got three percent.
I look at it totally different. You're, you're taking away their fifty, it's not a, it's a fifty percent raise that they got in. So you're taking that fifty percent, you're taking fifty cents away and then you're giving them seven percent is what we did.
That's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
So they are getting a raise.
They, that, right, but that's not what you're imposing. That's, that's what, that's what we had.
But what I'm, I'm, they still are getting the benefit of the increased salary this year, next year.
Any.
Right, but that's not a raise next year.
I didn't say it was a raise next year, but you still, they're still giving the benefit for next year.
Okay.
But, yeah. So here's the alternative.
So they get the benefit for nineteen months. Everybody else gets a seven percent benefit for twelve. That's what I get the weighted average.
It's a seven percent that they'll get next year. Is that a seven percent? Including that three percent that they got this year?
No, no, we, we retracted that back to their January first pay scale.
But if you don't then seven percent raise this year, then you penalize them for all future raises. All their future raises will be less because they didn't get this raise. And so that compounds for the rest of their career with the PAPI. So that's, that's my other biggest concern.
Well, and like I said, what prompted, prompted our feelings and I think what prompted a lot of the contention and discussion was when they came in and asked for those, that increased salary to attract quality people, Tracy made the comment to them that, you know, and granted, none of us were expecting to give seven percent this, not a one of us. I'm thrilled that we did. However, she made the comment, don't expect anything in the raise by this fall.
Yeah, but we haven't treated anybody else that way. In all the other mid-year raises we gave, we did not treat anybody else with that kind of mentality. We didn't say to the highway department or APC or any, whoever else.
I agree. I agree. Yes.
You're right. They didn't. But to my point, you.
Highway did.
We did.
One in the highway and you got one in the prosecutor's office and then the courts is what I recognized.
Right.
So what do we want? Is, so, uh, is there any other discussion on? Um.
Me, it's all in the court. You either give them a percent and give them seven percent.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to reiterate, they're, I'm, I'm, I don't have the vote in front of me. It was unanimous that we were, we gave them that mid-year raise. Like, so ever, everybody here voted for that.
Right.
Um, it, it's not a surprise that it happened. I, I don't see how we penalize them. We knew the, the consequences of our, of that vote.
It's not about, it's not about penalizing. It's just about how it's going to.
I thought, I thought that was going to be for next year. I thought when we did that, that was going to be for twenty twenty-two also. Did you not?
I did.
So, so if that was, that case, then, then we came along and you said.
Well, we, we gave larger raises to everybody else. I don't see how we penalize them because we gave.
And that's where I had came from. I had always said, if we're going to give them fifty percent now, which comes to three or four percent, and we're going to get seven percent, then they should receive the other, the rest of the percentage. So it wasn't that I, I don't want to take the fifty cents away, but it's, it's either or. You want to be the same amount.
Right.
So I'm happy with what we did. I just did not want to see them get the fifty cent plus a seven percent on top of that.
I, I agree with that.
So the ending result is the same.
I agree.
It's just how the view of people are going to view it and it'll just have to be explained to them how we did it, if they have questions. But all in all, it's just. I mean, it won't. I know it won't. And that's why I, I tried, I wanted to do the other way, but that wasn't the consensus.
So, so right, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, it's fine. Go ahead.
No, please. Uh, so is, is there any other discussion on leaving versus changing, uh, the number? I mean, let me see. Is, how many members would like to leave the number the way we established during the budget hearings?
I'd like to leave the number.
The seven percent based off of where we started?
Where we started.
Where we started. So was that you in favor of that? Up?
Yep.
So we have four members there. Ethan?
Uh, I'm going to change it.
Okay. So we, uh, I assume that you're on a change. So we would be.
So, well, we may rub it in. The end number is not a problem. I don't think anybody's questioning the end number we came to. It's how you're getting to the end number. You're taking away fifty cents. And I know there's no difference in the end number. But.
I don't think anybody's going to care about what you're saying. You know, they're just going to see at the end, the result.
Okay.
And go from there. I mean, you know, explaining it all is, is just going to make it worse.
I mean, that's what I mean. The end result is the same. The end number is the same.
They got the same as everybody else at the end. We, this, this body voted to give them in March, beginning in April, an extra fifty cents.
They just.
And that, that, that was, that was a bump that they got for that. And, and I want to go back even further. What precipitated all that was that we were reorganizing the courts.
Right.
And I, I don't think that, that's kind of being overlooked. The courts are completely different than they were when we started the year. And, and that reorganization has been, we've been trying to get that accomplished for two or three budgets, I guess. And it didn't happen.
Yep.
I have never heard of this. I don't know where you're coming from, but that's.
I think it started with Curtis.
Curtis was the, well, uh, it was actually Judge Deener. And Judge Deener and Judge Bounce couldn't agree on, on how to do it.
It was discussed to share if they will not have two and all that. I mean, it was, it's gotten bigger than what it was discussed at the very beginning.
Well, that's true. So we did want more people out of, into joint courts to, to balance the load, the workload on the third floor. That was, that was a big thing. So anyway, is there any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. Bye, Ethan.
Thank you.
That is yours.